Single course, I'll say that number is probably at around twenty. If you're talking about, you know, failing multiple courses, I'd say that probably goes down to around ten. So, I mean, there's always somebody that's not.
Yeah.
That just is what it is, but, you know, but it still, it still concerns me, you know, with the kids not being at home, you know? No matter what my personal opinion is, I think a kid learns better in school. Now, that being said, man, I've, I've got some kids on here that are flying. I mean, they're doing great, and so I, I don't want to rock their card, you know?
Right.
You're, you're going good, I want you to keep doing good.
Do you have a total amount that that's costing?
Two more bullet points. So, you know, and back to Mr. Farmer's point, currently, we've got about eighty students district-wide, you know, doing this, you know, in, in one form or another through Launch, through MOVA, through our Playoffs system. Right now, our, and I'll say this is the majority, that there's another bill of about three thousand, thirty-six hundred, somewhere around there. But our biggest bill was ninety-three thousand, six hundred dollars. That was for the overwhelming majority of our students for virtual. I did send an application into the New County Commissioners for this. It has not yet been approved, so everyone crush your fingers, knock on wood, say your prayer, whatever you need to do, because that would... They, they did ask me a question regarding it, so that made, that made me feel good that they like, like, okay, we're considering it. So, I, I keep checking every week, but it still hasn't come through yet, so hopefully they will, they will have done that. But that will be, and so we will, you know, ninety-three thousand, ninety-three, ninety-three thousand, six hundred dollars, you know, if we have a few more kids go off, but I also know there's been a concern with some parents, and I've had some already call me saying, you know, can we go virtual next semester? So, if we're talking about roughly the same, we'll be talking about this bill again next semester. We've, we've begun giving our second set of benchmarks in our grades, in, in grades two through eight for EL Math, ELA, math and science. So, they're in the process of, some have finished, some are almost finished, so we're right there. Make-up EOCs are, and of course exams are going to be given at the high school before Christmas break. The make-ups are, we were exempted from all those, from having to make those up, except for any kid who failed it. If you failed the class in Algebra I, Biology, English II, or American Government, if you failed any semester, you are going to have to make the EOC up, so we're going to try to get those done earlier rather than later. Our last PD Day, teachers use that to, to compare power standards. Power standards are, you know, teachers have a vast amount of standards, so we ask them to say, okay, let's try to condense these down to the things that you think are, are the most important to teach. So, they have their power standards. Well, DESI is also put out, getting ready to put out, what they call priority standards, and this is the things that they think are the absolute most important things. This is kind of in response to last March when we had to do a closure, so they're kind of looking at these things like, okay, if you didn't do anything else, if you did these things, this should help the kid at least be successful the next grade. So, teachers are looking at those, kind of comparing what they thought was the most important to what DESI thought was most important. Lastly, we had, Freeman Hospital gave our teachers and staff demonstrations regarding telemedicine. Some of you may have heard that phone call that went out today, so we have telemedicine at all three campuses. It's pretty slick. I mean, the nurses there, they have the equipment, the doctor or nurse practitioner is right there. I mean, you can see here everything, it is, it's pretty cool. And if, you know, if Laramie's sick and Tracy can't get off from work, they will even send her a link that she can access on her phone, and then she's right there with them, seeing everything that they see. So, it's a, it's a really, really neat thing, and I think it, it really helps for those not horrible, horrible things that you need to go to the doctor for, you know, you got a, you know, a sore throat or an earache or something like that, they can, they can help things like that. But that, that's, that's going out, that's going, that's available to all staff and students.
Even though not with Freeman Health, it's a thirty-five dollar flat fee.
Correct.
Okay, I was just saying, how does, how does that work?
You could use your insurance.
Okay.
But if telemedicine didn't happen to be covered, but you thought it did, you're got to pay for the full amount.
Okay.
But otherwise, all you need to pay is thirty-five bucks, anybody. Even if, even if Mercy is your provider, you can still use them.
So, does the school, I mean, do they charge the school to have this in there? So, no, they don't.
Yep. New County Commissioners bought all the equipment.
That's what I was thinking.
It's a bit, each, each campus has a big old cart and looks like a swanky lap, or a swanky iPad on it with a bunch of equipment that's able to be used by the nurse. And then Freeman, YOshow, they're paying for the nurse practitioner and the doctor to be able to, and that, I believe it's a full-time one, that's all they do, because they're also doing us, Seneca Diamond, YOshow.
In West Union.
Oh, in West Union. And then lastly, we had training for a lot of our staff that, and sponsors and coaches, a lot of it was high school, but there was also some junior high, and this was crisis intervention training for if we ever had a situation develop off-campus, off-hours, anything that happens on-campus, we think we're very well-prepared for by the people we have here. You know, if Mrs. Mason, you know, had to take her kids to Oklahoma City, and then something happened, then now she has some, some documentation of like, okay, these are the things I need to do if, if something like this should happen. So, we, we provided that crisis intervention training, so they can kind of know where to go and first steps if something like that should happen. That's all we've got. They have any questions, Mike, man?
Scott, those telemedicines, the equipment, it is considered ours, is it on lease, loan, where are we with that?
They purchased it, it is theirs.
Yeah, I, I think it's like on loan to us, I mean, it's...
So, it, we'll have it next year, is it one...
We will have it in perpetuity until they, you know...
Decide otherwise.
Correct.
The only thing that it, we signed, our, our contract says if it's destroyed, we got to pay for it.
Yeah.
Because we're holding on to it, but other than that, it was all, I mean, Marty and Adam set everything up, and their IT folks came out, and we, we are out no money for this, except for Marty and Adam's stuff.
And it's stored in each school's quarantine room that are almost like, except for Triway, it's pretty close right by each nurse office. So, that's where it's at.
So, have we used all of them a little bit, or none of them, or what, what do you...
They've only been live for two days.
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Yep.
The demo was pretty cool.
I was just saying, play with them, I guess, and then figure it out.
Yeah, that's why I was wondering, you know, because we have some issue come up, we, we do know, we had training on them, we're good to use them.
Okay.
Yep, the nurses all, you know, they're, they're pretty much going to point to where the nurse practitioner or doctor says, and, you know, I need you to put this on now, and like, that's what they'll do.
It's kind of like a peacemaker where they have the telephone and they put the telephone...
Yeah, it's like that, I mean, there's a, there's a thing for the heart, and then you can look in the ear, and I mean...
Otoscope.
Yeah, otoscope, so, I mean, pretty good eyes, you can see, uh, put something on for...
We would invite you to come look at them, but...
No.
Read after hours if you want sometime.
That would be neat, that, that's a really good deal. Okay, you guys got any questions or comments before we move on? Okay, under old business, we are going to talk about superintentia evaluation, and this is a discussion item before we proceed on to new business. Any thoughts or comments? When we put this on there last month, we were going to kind of review maybe your update.
How many times am I supposed to make a copy?
I know, I'm sorry.
I can, I can.
Well, I mean, that would be...
So, you pick them out?
Yes.
We discussed it.
Yes. Okay.
So, we're got, we've got training, right?
We've got training.
Who all, are we all going to training?
We're all going.
Want to do soon or late?
I just sent it in and confirmed, so we're, we're good.
Potentially at this point, we're all going.
Well, better to send in than to not send in, is the thing, so we're good.
Okay, so, so when is evaluations due? I guess, when, when are they technically supposed to be done, submitted or whatever?
So, we can have our training and do what, maybe...
That'll help us.
Okay. All right, anybody else on that, this discussion item? Yeah.
Well, don't we, aren't we supposed to...
Oh.
At some point.
That's what it says.
Up to you all.
It says we're supposed to, it says we're supposed to look at it. Are we deciding on that before we go to the meeting, is that what?
Well, no, I don't think we have to make a decision.
We're just going to have that information so we can... Tammy, do you want to go ahead while Mr. Rusty finishes that up and go over board election filing dates?
Sure, I sent it all in your packet.
Yep.
I just wanted you guys to take a look at it. See if, see if that's good, we have to...
We should give a training deal about wording, we've, we've got that...
That's basically it right now. I was that you just make a case of, that was that you need to, and it was, it was also...
Motion to approve the board election filing dates.
Hold on a minute. Okay. I made that.
Second?
I'll say it.
Tracy's second. Needing further discussion on the board election filing dates. Seeing none, team vote, all in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, all opposed, thank you, seven oh, motion passes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, let's go on and let's see if we can get a few of these others done. Yeah, I'll do it, it should be pretty easy. Mr. Kirby named the homeless school liaison, Derek Cook named migrant DLA coordinator. Do you want to give a summary, discussion on that?
Federal programs, we always have to tell who they're going to be, and these individuals have done it the past several years, and always, they know what they're doing, so...
Highly recommended that they stay there.
Yes, please.
All right, that made motion, is there a second? Any second? Any discussion? Discussion, okay, all in favor, raise your right hand, thank you, all opposed, motion passes, seven oh. Okay, the John T. Belcher Scholarship.
There was only one applicant, so...
Okay, so what is the scholarship, what is she applying for per se?
She's applying to be considered in Missouri for the scholarship, so it's like a thousand dollar scholarship that...
Okay.
That DESI gives away.
And it has to pass through us first?
So, yeah, the board has to choose a student from their school, but we have them apply, and only one applies this year.
Okay, I just, I'd never, I guess I could have Googled it more because I...
It's our nominee for it.
We've had, we've had students chosen for it, and I actually won it, I mean...
Well, this is definitely an awesome candidate, I mean, she...
Yeah, absolutely.
I just didn't know if it was like, in a certain field, if it had to be in a certain field to study, or whatever. I, I, yeah, I mean, she's stuck in it.
Okay, Tracy Moon, is there a second?
All second.
And Chuck's second, so that we have this as low as being our candidates, all those, any discussions? In all the favor, say aye. All in favor, raise your right hand, opposed, motion passed, seven oh.
For future reference, so we wouldn't say their name.
Yeah, we...
Right.
Sorry, my fault.
Well, I had one, so...
All right, Ag Department Wi-Fi, I think, Ms. Judy, you...
Yeah, I, the only thing that I know that they're, that the only problem is that they're having, that the kids can't log on, like, none of them have a general login, so like, like if Chuck's in there and he's on a website he's not supposed to be, you don't really know that it was Chuck, because he doesn't have a, they don't have a general, they have a general login rather than login in as Chuck, but...
Oh, there is the whole time.
So, I mean, that's something that might need to be looked at.
Are you talking about the...
Are they logging on their computers?
That's only why they could, they can...
No, I mean, when they log in, they're just logging, they all have a general login, they're not logging in as their name.
So, they're logging in on a computer?
Yeah, right.
So, that's a, I'm not understanding.
Yeah, I don't, I don't...
They can't log in on their phone, or...
It's an iPad, it's a login on an iPad, is that what they use, okay, so everybody...
It's not login, they're just getting on the iPad.
Right.
Okay, so they need to have security on it.
Yeah, that's right.
Needs to have security placed on the...
I'm surprised that even open...
And they could have the login there. It said iPad.
That's just...
So, it's just like an iPad, you have to have a security login, so...
All right, thank you, any other thoughts on that one? All right, let's go to the CARES Act requesting and spending. Any other, anything, it's just one of the topics, anything else? Tracy, Judy, you guys were kind of the ones that were...
I just, I just want, I just like that, yeah. I think we have an idea what, what's going out and what's coming in, and what we might be getting back versus...
We'll do that on, he'll do that, he'll do, those guys will do it both.
Because it'll be both of them.
Yeah, and it'll be in the reports every time, yeah.
All right, last item, but we just added the school calendar, just Tracy.
There's two of them, school calendar and then the project grad.
Project grad deal.
Uh, let's, project grad, I had them approach me about the possibility of donkey basketball. Oh, okay, what, what, okay, so good, bad, and ugly, they wanted to do it...
It's already been, I'm sorry, I interrupted you, it's already been resolved.
Okay, what, what...
I didn't, I found out about it earlier this week, and when I found out, we resolved it.
Okay, what are we, this, yes, no, maybe?
It's, it's, it's in discussion.
It's scheduled right now.
Yeah, it's, and in discussion, I mean, just had to, I didn't know anything about it, so...
Yeah, okay, I was going to say, I didn't really either until today, and it was like, I think we're...
If you could, when that happens, let me know, because I can solve it before it gets to the board level.
Well, and I, like, I didn't even realize that it wasn't going on, and it was like, okay...
I think they really reached out to a couple of us, so...
So, all right, then that's, that's good, okay. Project grad thing's done. Um, okay, possibly concerning school calendar amending thing. Okay, so, tell me the ramifications if we call off and then close the school Monday and Tuesday, the entire week of Thanksgiving. For the health, the safety of, of the kids, the student, or, you know, the kids, the, the faculty, the staff, what is the overall, we completely shut it down for nine days, let them disinfect it, let it clean? From a school board standpoint, what is, what's the good, the bad, and the ugly?
Can you go back to our numbers at the, what, our, right now? I didn't realize, because it's true.
Yeah. Can we decide to do that?
Scott, speak up, Judy. Thank you.
I didn't even know he was talking.
Does that hurt, a little sting?
I have, I'm only speaking to one aspect of it. If you decide to do that, and we have these plans in place, we have two plans in place, AMI and our AMI Extended. First of all, AMI couldn't be used at all, that's a packet we sent home with every kid at the beginning of the year, because that's for weather, so that one's gone.
Okay.
So, then we go to option two, if we're sure we're closing because of COVID, and we want to activate our AMIX plan. It will be difficult, and I'm not saying it can't be done.
Right.
Every single teacher is going to have to do a lesson that is current, it's not going to be a makeup, it's not going to be, here's a piece of paper, they're going to continue teaching, and they're going to have to make sure that that gets out to everyone. For those kids that are virtual, it's probably not that problematic, but for those kids that aren't virtual, the expectation is, I still give them the exact same kind of instruction that I would have given to those kids that are virtual, and, and here's the kicker, I have to get feedback from them, because I have to know, did Tracy understand what I'm talking about? The only ways I can do that are probably by phone, and if I call Laramie, I'm probably getting you at work. That's the prob, those are, and those are just the, if, if we want to do that and still continue to have school on those two days without exactly being there.
So, if we go virtual, if we go virtual, all the teachers are still here, all the bus drivers are still here, everybody's still at work, we don't, it's not a day off, it's...
Okay, I'm saying, take the, take the day off, completely shut the school down for two days, and make those days up.
I like that one better, let's not do that.
Make those days up on, on another Monday, like it would be, you know, if we, if we didn't, you know, we can call off school for a snow day within an hour, and old snow days, we didn't have to, you know, we made them up later on.
That's...
So, if we completely shut the school down, had it empty for the equivalent of nine days, to go in, disinfect, you know, okay, I'll be honest with you, as a school board member, because I've played this devil advocate in my head over and over and over, as a school board member, for the health and safety of students and staff, I would like to see the school shut down, but as a parent, I think, again, we've discussed it, they need to be in that classroom learning. Now, again, the same thing falls, I've got two Thanksgivings scheduled, I'm going to be around different people at those times, so when we come back from school, we've got a three-week before Christmas break, and this pops up, and we have to do this day-by-day thing, and what if the numbers escalate worse than this before Christmas?
So, what if they travel?
Lots of great questions, we have no answers to them. Yeah, we have no answers to them.
But are we really educated enough to make it as a school? I mean, really, we need a healthcare professional, I was contacted by two of them.
Right.
And they told me, do not, whatever you do, do not shut down, because Monday and Tuesday, people who are off are going to go to family, go ahead and go travel, out of state, wherever they're going and stuff, so then the spike would come, you know, right as soon as we were back and stuff like that. So, their recommendation was, oh, please do not do that, is what they came to me, because I didn't know that they called me, and they're like, you guys are having a board meeting, and you guys are going to vote, and I'm like, we're going to vote? I mean, I didn't see that, but, so they were...
What I can say is, I sp, I went to all three buildings and talked to teachers, and, and, I mean, and I talked to anybody. Anybody who'd listen to me, I talked to them, so I didn't pick and choose people, I just walked around, anybody who had a moment, I talked to them about it, and asked their opinion, what would they rather do, and the mass, I mean, I don't, the vast majority of them said they'd rather have the kids here and get the two days in, and move on, but that's, I just spoke to teachers, I didn't speak to...
Their numbers were higher than, I mean, but, I mean, it's not...
Because our number's five ninety, or...
Yeah, they're going to go drastically down.
Yeah, I agree.
I would also say, and I, I totally understand your concern, and I...
Oh, I think we all have that, right.
Yes.
But, if, if, if that was truly where I was thinking, if that's what you want to do, my thing would be, I'd rather do it on the back end. I'd rather do it...
I agree.
On Tuesday, Wednesday, when we were supposed to come back, because I, I'll be honest with you, I'm scared to death of after Thanksgiving and after Christmas. Because I don't know where they're going.
I mean, I think we can all agree...
I mean, I just, you know, we all kind of yelled in and said, my gosh, our phones are blowing up, what's going on? You know, and, and again, fifty, fifty, fifty of what, you know, let's cancel, let's not, and I'm just, you know, trying to play that...
Right.
Board, board member versus parent here, as a parent, I want my kid in school, but as a board member, okay, the safety of the kids and the, and the staff, you know, they're all stressed, I mean, everybody's stressed. But yes, I mean, if, if we all go away, and how many of us are going to travel or have, you know, extended family over?
But then a lot of us, I mean, a lot of us are being more responsible, you know, and cutting back things, that's what we're, yeah. So, I mean, there is a large group that is doing that as well, but, I mean, if I had a healthcare official telling me, you know, and maybe that's what we need to do at some point if it comes to that, invite someone, or the Freeman people, maybe we could get on with them and say, hey, you know...
They, they claim, what I've heard, is that we're supposed to have like another, or thinking around March, that it is five, so, I mean, it, right now, if we're doing good, I think we need to keep...
I don't know that there's a solution, I mean, we're, this is one of those situations, we decide to do one thing, we're going to make a whole bunch of people angry, we decide to do another thing, we're going to make a whole bunch of people angry. My, my thought is, stay the course and continue what we've been doing, and we've been fairly successful, we've had this blip, we've had this bump, I don't call it a blip, we've had this, we've had this spike.
Spike.
And we've made it through, not, not without any issues, we've had issues, and we've had difficulties going through it, but we're making it through, and come Monday, our numbers will be, you know, hopefully, they'll spike back up, but hopefully, our numbers will come down. That's just my thought, I mean, I, this is...
So, do we need to kind of take a poll here, do we need to motion, what do you guys want, what's your...
I think it's difficult with those numbers.
I agree.
I mean, with the data that we have, that it makes it difficult to constitute, you know, yeah.
And with that as well, remember that...
One percent.
Exactly, I, I don't, I don't see how we...
Well, the state shutdown level is over five percent, so if we have over five percent of our kids testing positive, then that's when we're supposed to, to look at shutting down.
Because we have the more lax deal where they, you know, if they're close contact, whenever you got to come back to school, she was staying longer, um, she just, you know, got in the quarantine corner, had to wear a mask because she was just close contact. What, I mean, would that be completely different on our numbers then? If those kids were not able to come in because they were close contact?
Did you see now where it's mask to mask is, you're not quarantined?
Right.
So, I mean, we can up the mask.
Well, I mean, if, if, yeah, I, I think I know where you're coming from.
Thank you.
You're talking about Triway, there are thirty-one students in quarantine, and, and quarantine in that instance would mean they're not there.
Right, they would not be there.
That's thirty-one students that are not there.
So, you would have a total of thirty-two out at Triway.
Right, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that all thirty-one are back there, but I mean, I would probably say the majority are.
We, we, our parents have been very, very good to, if it's been a close contact, to allow the kids to come to school with a mask. And to this date, we don't know that, and to this date, we don't have any evidence that kids have spread it at school.
We still get it, we still get it.
I mean, we're still candidates in quarantine, so we're using our AMIX for them, or, so we're getting ninety-four percent attendance for everybody that's not there.
Okay, so, of the thirty-two that would be home, you'd still be getting ninety-four percent of them.
Better than just an absence.
I don't know that any decision is going to be a good one, but I, I don't think we need to make any rash decisions, what do you guys think? I think...
I think at this point, we have to rely on data.
I think we do.
Because that's probably a...
I think it sounds...
This conversation, this conversation could be totally opposite in, in a month.
Or in two weeks.
Yeah, we don't know.
After, we don't know at Thanksgiving, we may have to have an emergency meeting.
We might. So, can we all agree we're just going to kind of proceed on and see what happens with the data? Okay. All right, anything else for the good of the college, because our next item is executive session.
Nope.
Nope, we can go back to this.
Oh, sorry, forgot. Let's go back to the discussion on superintendent's evaluation. You all got the copies?
How do you feel?
You know, it's, it's difficult, so, the hardest part about it is trying to find something that's measurable, and put, and putting, um, quantitating it and putting numbers on it. That's the hardest part, because a lot of it just becomes subjective, so making it objective is very, very difficult. And some of the things that happen with, you know, doing a good job, and I think doing a good job and, and making sure that things are going well, don't, don't, aren't necessarily measurable by numbers. The measurable by number things are the budget, you can do that, test scores, you can do that, those are things that are measurable, but when you're looking at, um, number two, yeah, positive culture, that's hard to quantify, it really is.
What's the need to deal with, I mean...
That's, it sounds positive from what I hear, yeah.
With that committee, I mean, that's, that's good.
The, and, um, you know, the vision and that, that's, again, that's hard to quantify, it's hard to put numbers to that stuff. And there are many things in there, you could, remember, the package is what, a hundred and twenty-seven pages long, the packet is? And, and again, it's a guide, it's not necessarily the, you know, you have to do all these things, it's a guide. Really, it comes down to the board, and what you feel needs, you know, goals and those things that you feel, and, and normally, when you develop one of these, you come up with them, and we decide together, this is what you want to measure me on this year, and do those things, that's the way that it's usually done.
And so, that's what we will do in December?
Yes, that's what we can do, that's fine what we can do in December.
And it will be on these?
Yeah. And I was just going on the model that the boards had used in the past, which is, I just give you things, and then you, if that's good, that's good. So, that's what we've done in the past, is I give you the, the things that I think probably we should be measuring on, you either like them or don't like them, or change them, but I, I've got no issues in, in, that'd be January where you, or December, which, I think it'd be January, because you're doing the evaluation in December, so January is when you would want to...
Start new.
Yeah, with the new goals.
We're still going off these for, for this year, yeah.
And we will have training that will give us a little more insight maybe, you know, and that, that...
And I think, I, I don't know what the training will be, but I think it'll be, I, I don't know what it'll be.
I'll put it this way, any, any training is better than what we've had, so, like, you know...
Well, the challenge is, remember, the challenge is that boards are given ideas, but boards throughout, I mean, people are individuals, and individuals on boards have different ideas and different things, so sometimes going through the training will, it'll, of course, help, I'm not saying it won't, of course, it will help, but remember, it's, it's a, no one measurement object is, is great for everybody, is what I'm trying to say.
It's not a one-size-fits-all.
It will expand our ideas.
Right.
Is DESI putting it on?
Yes.
Yes, so that should be correct.
Okay, anybody else? If not, I would interrupt...